Track an agreement on it.
What is this? Is this that letter? Yeah, we got that already.
Yeah, it can't be an email.
Huh?
It can't be an email. This is just the responses to the comments.
Oh, that's okay. I was gonna say. That's also in the, uh...
Not done. Get too comfortable over there.
Geez. How are you feeling?
I'm better.
I never know what's going on. Nobody tells me.
Well, you could've come by.
Flu. Well, I don't wanna come... He said you had the flu.
I did.
I said, "Well, I'm not coming by then."
I had an intestinal infection.
It was coming out of both ends for two days.
How could you get that?
Eight pounds.
Where'd you get that, Eric? Where could you get that?
Somebody had your office.
I'm sure.
There she is.
I've been following your emails. I've sent you a bunch.
Maria.
Yes, sir.
Some of them are the repeaters.
Whenever I get a flu...
I followed up on all of them that you... once before.
You're gonna have to bring cookies again, 'cause he didn't get it.
I got a meeting at the city this afternoon on, uh... Twelve points. It's in Escrow. Ready, ready, ready? Good morning. Welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission for May 8th, 2019. Information concerning the following agenda items is available for public consideration during normal working hours at the Resource Management Agency Permit Center, 5961 South Mooney Boulevard, Visalia, California. Staff will assist in answering questions. For further information about the Planning Commission, see the last page. All public hearings are scheduled for certain times or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard. All non-timed items will be considered following the public hearing or when time permits. Persons wishing to speak on any of the agenda items who have made a political contribution of more than $250 to any commissioner in the last 12 months must indicate this when speaking. May I have a roll call? Oh, excuse me. I'm gonna open public hearing. Well, we'll do that later. Um... Roll call, please.
President.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
Huilach.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Thank you. Would you all stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And briefly, before we begin, I'm pleased to announce we have a new Land Commissioner this morning from District 5, Mr. Steve Pearson. I know Steve. Excellent choice. And Steve, if you have any comments about, uh... Your arriving, any words of wisdom, you can do it now or speak forever.
None yet. How's that?
Okay, alright. Thank you very much. Public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration so that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. That's me. Note: In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. All... At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And I will say briefly, as a courtesy to others in attendance this morning, please turn off any electronic devices so that we can hear all the testimony. This is a recorded session and in compliance with the American... Americans with Disability Act. If you need special assistance to participate in the meeting, please contact the Resource Management Agency at 559-624-7000. At this time, I will open the hearing to the public for any comments of a non-agenda-related issues. Are there any members out there that would like to make a comment of the public? If not, I'll close public testimony. And we will move on to Item 3, Approval of the Minutes for April 24th, 2019. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion that we approve the minutes for April 24th.
Second. I'll second. Roll call.
McAlroy.
Stane.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Yes.
Substan.
Huilach.
Yes.
Pearson.
Stane.
Aguilar.
Yes.
I'm moved. Moving on to Item 4, Public Hearing. Special Use Permit Number PSB-18-086, Fortino Reyna. Categorical Consumption and Special Use Permit PSB-18-086 to allow the assemblage of people for educational and/or entertainment purposes, family functions, sports, activities, holidays, time off, DJ, Christmas play, wedding, church activities, bicycle riding on a 1.0-acre parcel in the zoned AE20, Exclusive Agriculture 20-acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the north side of Avenue 416, East El Monte Way, approximately .67 miles east of the intersection of Road 104 and Avenue 416, 1.78 miles outside of Sultana. And our contact this morning is the Director himself, Mr. Aaron Bach.
Yes, Chairman Millies, Commissioners. I am Aaron Bach, Assistant Director for the Resource Management Agency. And before you today is the Reyna Special Use Permit for assemblages of people. Just real quickly, here's the vicinity map. The subject property is located on the north side of Avenue 416, approximately .67 miles east of the intersection of Road 104 and Avenue 416 outside of Sultana. Here's the aerial photograph of the site. The existing zoning is for agriculture, and that's why it requires a use permit. Uh... Here is the wetlands maps, which show there are no impacts to wetlands or waterways of the United States. Real quickly, here's the site plan that's contemplated for this project. The project is consistent with the county general plan since the property is too small for agricultural purposes, but the land can be reused for economic development. It has been this way since the land was deeded on April 3rd, 1953. The minimum-sized parcel for this use in the A zone is 20 acres. However, there have been two similar temporary use permits issued in 2018, and neighbors have sent in letters stating that with the 300-foot buffer zone, space is sufficient for this project. The applicant has also received endorsement from the Mayor of the City of Dinuba as to the satisfaction of the property. The subject site has adequate space to satisfy all other development standards under Section 16, Chapter 3, Appendix A. The special use permit will be conditioned to the... To preclude the proposed special events venue from being detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing in the neighborhood. The parking lot is located across the southeast and northeast portions of the subject site. This special use permit may include the sale of alcoholic beverages under on-sale licensing. The applicant shall obtain and maintain a liquor license as required by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. If an outside vendor is allowed onsite to serve alcohol, the vendor shall have the necessary licenses as required by ABC. The hours of operation will be from 6:00 to 12:00 a.m. Friday or Saturday only. The number of persons in attendance is expected to be approximately 120 people, including staff. Staff will provide continuous supervision in and around the site, including the parking area. Possessions of drugs, firearms, explosives, or fireworks are strictly forbidden on the premises. All music will be closely monitored in order to avoid disturbance due to high volumes. They highly respect their neighbors and don't want to disturb the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. Public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Visalia Times Delta with a 10-day public comment period. Four comments were received. We received one from Neil and Betty Ledbetter. Uh... And their concerns were addressing the noise level and how it was generally disturbing the peace. Mr. Reyna has acquired and actively patrols the property with a decibel reader now to prevent disturbing the peace. Also, staff has contacted the Dinuba Sheriff's Department in regards to the number of complaints the property owner has received in the last few years. The Sheriff's Department has indicated that they have had only one. Scott Harness, Mayor of City of Dinuba, has sent a letter of endorsement. The letter indicated how this project is a good example of how to obtain permits and operate such events. Mayor Harness has also indicated that he has visited the property and found it appropriate for the proposed use. Jose Lopez sent a letter endorsing Mr. Reyna's efforts to maintain a clean and safe neighborhood. Kirsten Cabrel, a representative of the Wawona Packing Company, has sent a letter of approval for this project so long as the 300-foot buffer zone is maintained between this project and theirs. This is in staff's report. If you have any questions of staff or the applicant, they are available.
Question?
Yes, I have a question on, um... The hours of operation go through 12:00 a.m. Is there a way that you can... We can cut the music off at an earlier time? Like, I think other venues, we have like a 10... 10 o'clock?
Yes, we can make that a condition. The music would stop at 10.
Any other questions?
I have a question, 'cause I think it was on the site plan. It said, "Family functions only." Does that include the church that's mentioned elsewhere? Or is... Does that need to be expanded?
Um... Through the Chair, I'd like to bring the applicant up to see exactly what they meant by that as far as the operational statement, but that'd be a little bit different.
If there are no other questions at this time, it's a public hearing. I'll open the testimony to the public. If the applicant would like to come up and introduce themselves, make comments, please state your name and address. Are there...
Is it next, please?
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Fortino Reyna, and I am the applicant.
Your address, sir?
My address is 10936 Avenue 416, Dinuba, California 93618.
Thank you very much.
I live on the property.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Do you have any... No, do you have any comments on the project?
Only that, uh... As... We have, um... We have, um... A spring family, friends, events. We have pony ride days. We have a school band practice. We have motivational speakers. We have a wedding. Or we have a quinceañera. And we really try and observe and respect the neighborhood in which we live in. Therefore, we're always trying to improve, and we're learning as we go. But we want to go through this legal process in order to have everything in order, and which is what we've been doing. Um... We... As I examined the letter provided by Mrs. Ledbetter, she mentions that we have had 15 events, and that is not correct, sir. Uh... We... I'm not gonna jeopardize our special use permits. We have had two in 2018, and we intend to fully cooperate. We're not gonna go beyond what the law does not require. As far as the music, sometimes we, um... We normally shut off about 11:30, and we had had mentioned that if we could shut it off at 10. Is there... Could we go in an extra hour to accommodate some of the function that we have? Is it possible?
Well, that would be in the conditions of approval.
Yes, through the Chair. We have allowed, in certain events, them to go to 11 o'clock with the music. Um... And that's within your purview and your discretion. But the suggestion was at this point, 10.
11. 11.
So if we can move that to 11.
Any comments, Commissioners? Well, since, you know, we do have a neighbor that has complained about the noise, and I think 10 is probably pretty reasonable.
I agree with you, but I'd like to hear the rest of the testimony.
Music we're talking about is amplified, is it?
Yes.
We...
That's amplified.
Acoustical guitars. We have a teacher that will... We go through and we teach the students how to play or a violin or a cello. And... Or we have a jazz day where they'll take out their trumpets and the saxophones and the clarinets. So it varies. Um... This is where sometimes I believe it could get a little loud because of the brass. Um... But even the denser, we have a decibel meter, which now we're able to control our sound. And as the history can say, you know, out of the events we've had, there's only been one sheriff visit, which makes it, um... Understood that we know what we're dealing with. So we have to be very, very, uh... Sensitive to that issue. So I am always on the property and always with my decibel meter, me and my brother, my wife. And we're always making sure that everything is under control. So, um... That's pretty much what I have to say.
Any other questions? Maria, did you have a question about church or something?
Oh, um... Yeah, because the question was, um... On one part of your plan, on the site plan, it says "family events."
Yes.
But then in the report, it says "family and church" and...
Yes.
Other things. So are they family, or is everybody in the church family?
Well, we're... It's basically all family, ma'am. And occasionally, with the kids, especially, we target the kids. Um... This is a good, safe place environment, so where they... It's protected. And so we can be able to offer them, uh... Not only entertainment purposes, but at the same time, learning things. Um... So I usually use the term "family" because it is a family-oriented situation. On some of these, we do not charge, ma'am. Some of these, we do it, you know, free. Uh... But previously, we would get together at the Dinuba Parks. People are drinking. People are sometimes out of control. So therefore, in a property like this, this project like this, everything is under control, which makes it a lot more better for the parents, for us, to control.
I have a technical question, then, because I'm not sure what the procedure is. Um... So I ask a lot of questions, 'cause...
That's fine, ma'am. Ask.
Yeah. Um... Because it specifies family, does that need to be amended, or no?
Uh... Well, through the Chair, the, um... The "family function" is obviously used more loosely.
Okay.
Family functions. Um... I wouldn't necessarily amend the site plan itself, but we could definitely put a finding in there that "family functions" on the site plan is used more broadly to include all the potential functions allowed under our use permit.
Not a rock concert and that kind of thing, yeah.
Well, we got a lot of learners, ma'am. We have a lot of young kids that are starving to learn how to play the cello and the trombone, and, um... You know, we pay close attention to that. Some of the teachers have helped us to be a participant in that. That's where Mayor Harness took it as a positive note, to see this, and... Yeah.
How many times a year, sir, would you have amplified sound, like music?
Um... Usually, like, for example, the Pony Day Ride, for example. You know, we have the Pony Day Ride that we have for the kids. Well, we have a pinata. We have different things going on, face painting and so on. We usually have... On every event, we have some type of a music happening.
How many times would it approach 10 or 11 o'clock?
Um... It would probably be... I would say about... About from 6:00 to 8:00.
Events a year?
No, we're intending to apply for 12 events. But during those 12 events, your question is how many events would require going to 11?
Going to a music and going to 10 or 11 o'clock?
I would say about from 6:00 to...
6?
Yeah, to 7:00.
Around the year?
Yeah. Where we would have to go to 11, because, um... Especially like on the 4th of July, you know, where we have some time off and we're able to extend it just a little bit longer.
And there are weekend events?
There are weekend events, yes.
And there are holidays, or there could be any...
There... Um... We have some... They're in holidays, and we have some that are not in the holidays. But just so you could have an idea, sir, we have, um... Valentine's Day, Easter Day, Memorial Day, Pony Ride Day, Family Day, Motivational Speaker Day. Obviously, in the motivational speaker, we wouldn't have music, 'cause people are trying to learn from the motivational speaker. We'll have a quinceañera, a wedding, a Christmas play. We put a little train, and it goes around the property and stuff like that. We have a Thanksgiving Day before actual Thanksgiving, like on a Wednesday. A Halloween Kids' Day, you know, we have the hay and the... And then we have Youth for Christ. So it varies, but usually we'll have some music going on.
I don't see 11 as unreasonable if it's just six events over the year. Sound like it's every weekend, but that's my opinion. Any other comments?
I think in certain areas, um... That 11 is reasonable. I mean, in town, the neighborhood sometimes goes longer, and I don't complain if I don't have to get up at Monday morning, but I think it's fine. 11 o'clock's fine.
It could always be, um... Toned back if it got... Is that right, Aaron?
Uh... Yeah, and that's, uh... We're leaving it a little bit up to the applicant here to keep the sounds monitored. Um... And we'll find out pretty quickly if they're not adhering to the 65 decibels at the property line.
Yeah. Maybe we could hear all the testimony, and maybe there'll be something from the Ledbitters or something, if they're here, that might help us a little bit make a decision.
I don't believe that they're here today, sir.
I hear you. Mr. Reyna, that's... Any other comments on your part?
Only that, because I live on the property, sir, you can only understand that it concerns me that things are under control. You know, I don't live in Los Angeles or San Francisco. I'm not an out-of-towner. I live right there. So it really, really... This is probably the strongest point that I... That would make my case a little bit more valid, is that I protect my property so much, from A to Z, you know? So that itself should demonstrate that I'm very observative, and I want things to be nice and clean and under control.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that are here to talk to this particular applicant? Alright, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
If there are no other comments from the public, I will close public testimony at this time.
Uh... Through the Chair, there is an existing condition for 11 o'clock. It's 65 decibels at the property line, so I think we're covered there. And subject to making a clarification on the findings, that the family function on the site plan includes all the uses already stated in the findings on the resolution. I think we'd be good.
Any other comments? Any other motions? Not other motions, as a motion to address this applicant. I did? Any motions to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code, Regulations, Section 15061b3, the general rule regarding a project that does not have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment and conditionally improve special use permit, subject to finding and conditions as...
Give a second.
Second.
Roll call.
McAlroy.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
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 Huilach.
No.
Pearson.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Aaron. Moving on to Item 5, a continued public hearing. Item 5A, Final Site Plan, PSR-18-011. Mindy Davis, TJ Land. Categorical Consumption and Final Site Plan, PSR-18-011, for accessory structures to the PD FM 217, Land Development Foothill Combining Special Mobile Home, 217,000 square foot Minimum Zone. The site is located in the Merton Ranch area on the northwest side of Powell Drive, approximately 1 mile north... Sorry, sorry, southeast of State Route 198 and 9 miles northeast of Exeter, continued from March 13th, 2019, and April 24th, 2019. And our contact this morning is Ms. April Hill. Good morning, April.
Good morning, Chairman Millies and Commissioners. Velma just passed out to you the draft revised resolution, photos of the site and surroundings that were provided by the applicants, TJ Land and Mindy Davis, also a copy of the covenant conditions and restrictions of the Oak Creek Ranch that were provided by the petitioner, Hans Steiner. The proposed accessory structures are 27,000 square feet of animal enclosures constructed of chain-link fencing, 10-foot-high, with a chain-link top to be used for a cat sanctuary for a maximum 100 cats for a period of 20 years, no more. As a reminder, here's the site plan showing the entire parcel with the house, detached garage, and existing and proposed animal enclosures. Here's a little more focused part of the enclosures and the shed buildings. The existing enclosure is behind the house and the garage, and the new enclosure is to the southwest. Here's a photo from the property line of the animal enclosures taken from the... Taken on March 11th. There are more photos of the same in the packet provided by the applicants. Here's a closer view of the existing animal enclosure accessory structures and their inhabitants. This is a copy of the landscape plan that was distributed at the April 24th meeting, showing screening trees and shrubs that will be planted in the front yard filling around the existing trees and shrubs that screen the enclosures from public view. Vines will be planted along the enclosure fence in certain areas. As noted, the F-zone, Foothill Combining Zone, allows animals and agriculture uses, approximately 83 fur-bearing animals per acre or 418 for a 5-acre parcel. That's by right. The operational statement cites that the cat house on the Kings recommends about 100 cats per acre. Based on their research, the applicants believe that the 0.62-acre enclosure with 10-foot vertical space is adequate for 100 cats that they're proposing. And the 100 cats is the size of the feral cat colony that's their trend. They're moving over to this site. The project meets the required findings of the zoning ordinance for the PD Zone and Final Site Plan. The project is consistent with the general plan. It's in the development corridor. The land use designation is mixed-use. It also complies with the zoning ordinance. It is under the 35 height limit for structures, and animals are allowed in the F-zone. Third finding is that it will not result in any significant environmental effects. We're defining it as an accessory structure, not a fence, 'cause that's a top ceiling. The project design does include landscape screening. The feral cats are examined by a vet. They're neutered, vaccinated, microchipped, and contained in the enclosures and not allowed to roam. The 10-foot structured height has been determined to be optimum. CCNRs are not enforced by the county. The project is not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity. Three meetings where have been held with the petitioners and applicants, Ad Resource Management Agency. The first on March twenty-first, another on April sixteenth, and the third this last Monday, uh, on May sixth. At the May sixth meeting, Animal Control Services staff attended and provided feedback. Your, um, your packet includes a memorandum responding to the issues listed in the minutes of the last meeting, the April twenty-fourth Planning Commission meeting. Also included in that memo are, uh, two bids that were, uh, for reducing the size of the accessory structures from ten feet to eight feet in height. The applicants received two bids, one for forty-one thousand dollars, and the other for forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Again, the applicants will limit the number of cats to one hundred in the enclosure for a twenty-year term. The size of the animal enclosures will be limited to twenty-seven thousand square feet, unless a public hearing is held and the Planning Commission approves a modification. As originally planned, landscape screening will be planted. The facility will be maintained as a private facility, not public. They won't have any adoption events or have any, or, and they will discourage anybody from dropping off cats, although cats are dropped off in the country all the time. The animal, uh, County Animal Services Division will inspect the site. Their conditions of approval include daily waste removal, spaying, neutering, vaccinations, microchips, and veterinary checkups. Other conditions of approval were included from the fire department, the building department, and foothill combining zone standards. A reclamation plan, uh, fund will be established to cover the costs of about ten thousand dollars to remove the animal enclosures at the end of the, you, at the end of the, uh, life of the, of this facility. Through the chair, uh, we have not, uh, we don't have set, set, uh...
Yes, through the chair, uh, generally when they provide the county security like they would on any improvement for a development project, uh, we'd be the, we'd be the bond holder, so, um, the issuer would give the money to the county if, uh, they failed to, uh, to reclaim it.
A public notice for the project is mailed to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet, published in the Sun Gazette, with a ten-day public period before, for attendees before the, uh, first public hearing. We received comments from several local residents and have met three times with them and the applicants to try to resolve the issues. This ends staff's report. Do you have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
What, so in the last meeting, what was, did they agree to, on both sides, or what happened in the last meeting?
There's still some disagreement.
What did they agree on since the last meeting?
Um, the animal, Animal Control Services conditions, having the...
Heights, no nothing, they didn't agree to change that. Okay.
Done a, a bullet chart of what they agreed to, what's still, uh, what's still hanging out there?
Uh, we did pass that out last time. Uh, we, we're basically, uh, down to, um, I, I think the applicant has, um, agreed to most of the, um, conditions that were raised. The, the, the last real item hanging out there is, as we discussed before, the, the height limitations or the size of the project. That would be the only outstanding item. Uh, outside of that, I think the other question is just its existence. But, uh, yeah, it's really, really about the, the height.
Right, from ten down to, what was it, it's eight?
Asked to even go lower than that, but, uh, he has...
Six, six, yeah.
We were discussing last time at the, the Planning Commission, eight feet, but it, whether that would be adequate or not, and, um, I, I don't think we have any agreement on, on that.
So all the other items or the issues have been resolved except the fence, fence height?
That, staff believes so, as reasonably as they can be resolved, and the applicants gone beyond, uh, in this case, because this is a site plan review, we're looking at zoning, setbacks, et cetera, and now we're into such things as, uh, landscaping for aesthetics and, uh, the amount of vegetation, the amount, they've capped themselves on the amount of cats, so, um, yeah, we, we, we've got, the applicant's gone beyond, and staff has gone beyond in trying to resolve tho, those issues, but, uh, one remaining issue is still the, the height.
Whether it's cage, and it still looks like a cage, you know, Bob Wiley detention facility, uh...
What are they?
It's landscape, so, you know, I, I don't, I don't think it makes a lot of difference, in my opinion.
If there are no other comments from my fellow commissioners, uh, this is a public hearing, I will open this hearing to the public at this time for comments from the applicant or any others of you that are here to speak on this project. How many are out there to talk about this project this morning? One, two, three, okay. So, uh, let's start off with the applicant, do you have some comments? You're Mr. Land, correct?
Correct, good morning, TJ Land, three-one-three-three-three Powell. Uh, I'll just quickly, uh, go over the height requirement. Uh, again, I, I will reiterate, the reason we want the height is so we can build the vertical spacing, and one of the things that the petitioners aren't understanding is by reducing the height, it also becomes a safety concern, because we have pins and kennels, uh, or structures inside there that gives those cats vertical height. We have to have people go in there by one of the conditions and clean daily, so to have people go into a cage that would be six foot and then have pins under that that would be four to five foot could be a safety concern. And, uh, I don't think that's something they're quite grasping, and that's why we can't relent on the ten-foot height. Also, with the landscape screening, they're not going to see it anyway, so there's not going to be a visual concern, so whether it's ten foot or eight foot, I feel is completely irrelevant. I think we've done a good job, we went, uh, and had a professional landscape architecture firm, uh, build that site plan and, and labeled the species of plants, bushes, uh, and so on and so forth.
Any questions of the applicant?
I, I saw shrubbery and whatnot inside the cages.
There is, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nice, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to come up? Please state your name and address.
Good morning, Roger Blaney, three-one-two-two-one Gordon Drive. I'm one of the parcels that was notified by mail. Uh, at the last meeting, I think it was Commissioner Elliot that brought up the issue of, uh, the reflectivity of a cell tower that was going to be placed somewhere. And one of the things that, that we're talking about here with the landscaping and screening is that, that this is galvanized chain link. And there's a lot of surface area to that by the scale of this project. So, um, with that in mind and the reflectivity of it, and there is a reference to reflective materials used for construction, uh, in our CCNRs, actually, it states that you're not supposed to use them. I recognize that this is a fabric, but there is still a considerable amount of, uh, surface area to it. So with that in mind, um, I'm, want you to consider perhaps requiring that this be electrostatically painted black. And the reason for that is your eye does not generally pick up those items, you kind of see through it. Um, and, uh, in coordination with that, the reason I make this recommendation is that the landscaping, although it's a grand plan, is going to take a considerable amount of time to get to that elevation.
Or green.
A dark green.
Saying, you're saying paint the, the chain, the chain link?
Uh-huh, you can electrostatically paint it.
How's that done?
You put a charge on the fence, you put a charge on the gun, they're opposite charge, and as you apply it, they're attracted to one another, but it's much like just spray painting.
Is there, is there vapor or residue on your...
It's a vapor.
There is?
Yeah.
Cats?
Well, I don't know. I'm trying to, to mitigate the impact on our neighborhood, uh, the cats are not really my concern.
You can't buy chain link in different colors, so the new could be green, or it could be black, so...
Agreed.
Because it's not all done, right?
Pardon me?
Not all completed.
Correct. Oh, how does the applicant feel about doing that?
Well, I'll ask.
That's all I have. Any questions?
Has that been proposed to the applicant, do you know?
No.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So noted. Uh, would the applicant like to come back up and comment on that?
TJ Land, three-one-three-three-three Powell Drive, uh, it is something that we discussed doing, uh, but the problem is, we would have to, to buy the green or black, we would have to take all the siding down, take all the poles out, so essentially, we're deconstructing this whole thing to rebuild it. And it was very expensive to do to begin with, let alone to do it a second time after tearing it down, so the landscape screening is the most cost-effective and the most reasonable way to do this, to screen the visual acuity from the public roads.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public would like to comment? Yes, sir, please come up and state your name and address.
Name's Hans Steiner, uh, live in Oak Creek Ranch, uh, three-one-three-five-four Gray Drive, Exeter. I'm also the chairman of our road committee, um, kind of representing a good section of our neighborhood. Our road isn't really part of what this is, but everybody started calling me when we had sea train containers show up and some other issues. I know there's some board members that weren't here previously, so I don't know if you want to rehash all that or just move forward with some of the new stuff. We had a road meeting a couple, uh, nights ago, and basically, none of the, none of the people that were at that road meeting, there were some new people, by the way, too, but nobody came to me and said, hey, you know what, let's just let this fade away. Everybody was, let's still push back against it. Uh, nobody's basically changed their mind on, on wanting to let this move forward if we can avoid it. I don't know if anybody has a scope of the size of this, but twenty-seven thousand square feet is huge. You can see it in the pictures, um, it's also ten feet tall. It, uh, they originally purchased the property, checked the CCNRs, checked the zoning, bought the property with the intent of putting the cats out there, kept it fairly, um, quiet or concealed it from the neighborhood as far as what they were doing, until they started more construction, and we put a, a stop with this county as far as not having it permitted. The, uh, it comes across as a noble cause, as far as the cats also. Uh, we don't really have a problem with the, with the care and custody of the cats, it's more the fact that cats are being relocated from a subdivision that they're building, pulling the cats out of that subdivision and putting them in ours. They don't plan on living at the residence, um, it's basically just being used as a facility to house the cats. So we have a vacant house in our property, um, for probably the next twenty years, currently been vacant for four years. We've had to look at this under construction now for four years, in different stages. There are neighbors that do see this from the top also, from their hilltop houses, so even if you've planted shrubbery around the sides of it, there are neighbors that still have to look down on top of it. So even by trying to put lipstick on it, it's still a pig. And then their neighbor did come forward, we had one initially in the first, um, meeting here, say that she was deathly allergic to cats, has had allergy problems, didn't know if it was related to the cats, didn't have a way of proving it. Uh, another lady by the name of, uh, Jamie Reyes recently moved in about six months ago. She carries an EpiPen for allergies for cats, said she will not go for a walk anymore, uh, that direction, and she also makes sure her windows are drive up, rolled up as she drives past the property for that reason. There's no way to really prove that or to validate that. She also made the comment that she didn't feel that it was right for the, for government to interfere in what somebody wanted to do as far as the project, but she did make the comment she would not have moved out here if she had known there was a cat sanctuary. The other thing that's come up is they've said that there's basically no impact as far as our property values. And I don't know any of you here that would want this next door to you and think that it wouldn't affect your property values. If you put a number to that, let's say it's ten thousand dollars per homeowner, you're talking three hundred thousand dollars that the subdivision loses in property value. This is nothing more than a hobby, it's a place to house her hundred cats that she wants to have, and it's extraordinary size, and money is no object, as far as they're concerned. They acquired the second property behind it, which was another five acres, to facilitate this also. And originally, the plan was fifty-one thousand square feet. That may have been a typo, but all the math adds up to fifty-one thousand when you look back through the original paperwork. We had suggested that we may have to enforce, if you guys move forward, that we'd have to enforce our CCNRs, and that was basically thought of as not very likely that we would do that. We have, in three different occasions, gone to court and, and been victorious in pushing our CCNRs, uh, mainly over the road, though, not over a situation like this. We gave a copy there of all the things that are in violation of our CCNRs, several of them are the fact that they're supposed to have it pre-approved by our architect committee, they're supposed to pay a fee, it's supposed to be harmonious with our subdivision, which it's not. They're also supposed to have a building permit, which they have not done with the county. The county has worked hard to make this work, they keep basically saying that, um, they're in agreement with it as far as moving forward, which basically, I asked Erin, it basically boils down to legally, there's not a reason to stop it or slow it down. Biggest problem on our end is it just does not tie in with the neighborhood. I noticed that when they come up and state their residence, they state, um, our subdivision is a residence, that's not where they live, um, they don't own the property, it's owned by family members. The, uh, let's see what else I've missed here. Another thing, the reclamation, um, they're basically saying ten thousand dollars, twenty years down the road. If that's the cost twenty years down the road, we're probably talking four to five in today's economy to have it taken down and removed, so that should not be a big financial burden on the applicants to have it removed at this point in time. We've, we basically have had to look at the construction of this, though, for the last four years. It's been in various stages, uh, no landscaping has really been put up around it. They claim, have claimed in the past that they've taken immaculate care of the property, yet eighteen trees, uh, dead redwoods were just taken off the property a week ago. Two years ago, my son and I stopped one night and put up about ten fence boards that had fallen down and been down for about a year around the property. The cat area looks beautiful, as far as where the cats sit, but from everybody else's view, it's not so pretty. One of our other big cons, we have two other big concerns, too, is the subdivision. One is that this opens the door with zoning, that what is to keep somebody to have, um, a wedding venue, move in, and it's like, as far as zoning and everything else, it's probably allowed, but that's not something we really need. We have private roads also, so the access in and out of the private roads is also impacted by traffic and things like that. The other is just the ability to put a business in our backyard, that's what, this basically, whether, what you want to call it, is a business. So you could have farm-like contractor running in and out of there, you could have, uh, construction company use it as a storage yard and move in and out at the same time. Basically, it boils down to that, if, uh, if this moves forward, you know, our next option is to enforce our CCNRs and then appeal it with the board supervisors. Any questions?
No, any questions?
One other thing, too, is, um, a comment had been made that this is really the best area for this, as far as they're concerned, because it has the least impact as far as zoning and everything else. Discussion with Erin, this could be moved to a walnut orchard, it could be put in a orange grove, it could be put anywhere, which would not impact anybody else's property values, and also would not impact anybody around them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. April, whose, whose photos were this in the packet we just got handed to us? Who's, who?
Photos were taken by the applicant.
Who?
Those photos are, are from the applicants.
We supplied those.
No, yours, those are from the April twenty-fourth.
Not the bound version, but these loose...
The current ones were, were supplied by the applicant. There were, for photos...
The bound version.
Yeah, there were photos, uh, provided in the April twenty-fourth.
So, yeah?
No, those were from, yours were supplied at the April twenty-fourth meeting, these were supplied for this.
All right, um, any other comments? Any other comments? Would anyone like to hear any other testimony from the public?
I think a couple of people would raise their hand, I don't know if they have anything different to say.
Any more, uh, people to come up from the public? Yes, ma'am. You haven't been up, yes, please. Something different from what's been presented so far?
A little bit on rebuttal. My name's Carol Passmore, I live at three one one seven five Gordon Drive, kitty corner across the street from the cat sanctuary. And I wanted to say that, um, I did go to the road commission meeting the other day, and Hans had said everybody was opposed to it. He said except a couple newcomers. I've been in, um, that house for nineteen years, so even though I haven't been going to the road committee once a year, I'm not really considered a newcomer. So, and I am totally for Mindy Davis's cat sanctuary. I want to mention that everybody that are directly next to her, beside her, are for her. And those are the people that, um, have either a clear access, a neighboring fence or something, but all those people are on her side. Also, um, at the road committee was the vet, her husband, and he is for Mindy also. So not everybody that Hans said was against it, and that was false. Something I want to say is I am a volunteer, I go over and I help clean. I help, uh, make sure everything's sterilized. It's amazing facility. The trees that they, you had mentioned, he had mentioned were taken down, were ill, they were dying trees. Her yard is one of the nicest kept yards, and, um, she makes sure that everything is properly cleaned. And, uh, the trees that were removed, there was no branches, nothing left over, not any fall. It was just all, um, quickly cleaned up. And they do have really nice plans for all of the vegetation to be going around it. And once the vines and things are there, you won't see it. On the inside, there's many plants. It's a beautiful facility, I wouldn't mind living inside of it, it's gorgeous. And, um, as I said, I, I just volunteer because I'm on her side, I think what she's doing is very noble. And, um, it's, it's just because of her heart, she's not gaining any money or anything for it, it's just because she sees a need. And, um, it's just, uh, in a situation where, um, she has kept it up beautifully. I just wanted to bring that to your attention because I felt like it was misrepresented when Hans mentioned that.
Thank you very much. Any comments for the questions? No? No? Thank you.
There's one more back there.
Yeah, I'm gonna get, yeah, yeah. Yes, right. Anybody else that's not been up? Yes, ma'am. Please come up, please come up, state your name and address.
Do I go down?
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Carol Steiner, um, I'm Hans's wife, so I might as well say that, put that out there. I'm not going to get real vocal about the whole situation, but I do want to say that not everybody in the circle around there, Karen Chandler's already voiced her opinion, she's across the street. You know, not, that's not, it's, it's divided, and that's what's really sad. We are a community, we all get along, we've had, uh, we've been out there almost thirty years. Most people that are opposed have been, because we know how close our community is and how everybody gets along. And what we don't want is a vacant house. We want neighbors and people living in these homes. Because the Davises, Davises aren't going, plans aren't going to be living, you know, in the house, or don't intend to live in the house. It's just a vacant house with cats, with feral cats behind it. They do take one, I, I think they do take good care of it, and I think their intentions are wonderful. It's just not the right place, so that's, that's my only comment, is that we would like to see families in a family residential neighborhood, not empty homes. I, I am concerned about twenty years from now, that home having not had anyone live in it and cats. Where that's going to go, and, and the ten thousand dollars seems miniscule for what it would cost to take care of that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do have a question for one of the applicants, uh, Ms. Davis, if you, would you, you said you took these photos? State your name and address, please.
Mindy Davis, three one three 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 Powell Drive.
Thank you very much. You took these photos?
Yes.
And what was the purpose of this set of photos?
Purpose was basically to show the, the neighborhoods, everybody out there has animals. There's every, basically everywhere you go, you're going to see corrals, you're going to see stables, you're going to see some sort of animal structure. You're going to see cows, donkeys, horses, dogs, cats out there. I, I, my main focus was just to show that every, that there, even when the animals aren't present, you still see some form of animal facility. My, my facility is different. My enclosure is technically smaller than most everybody's animal enclosures out there. It is different, I, I understand that. But we do only encapsulate twenty seven thousand square feet, which is just over half acre. Most of those animal corrals and horse arenas are acres, acre-sized cross fencing and members. There are other areas, other people out there that have had sea trains, so it's not, this is not an area that is strictly a residential neighborhood. It is a rural community, people move out there to be able to have animals and do what they want. Ours is completely off of the road, there is no smell, you don't see the animals, it's completely appropriate for the area. But unfortunately, I, I feel that we're being partially discriminated against because it's for cats, an enclosure that people aren't necessarily used to. It is an area for cats, so, um, that's primarily why I took the pictures. Those pictures are from the corner of Powell and Fritz, basically just that small section before you enter into my, my property. That top picture there with the horse on it, you can actually see my enclosure on the side, just to show you in reference. From the street, you can't tell that it's a big, tall, ten-foot fence, it, it does blend in with the fencing material out there.
That's why I asked you, because I, and I noticed, I could see your cages, and, and, uh, there was, there's a contrast here of different kinds of animal structures. That, was that your intent?
Yes, to show the barns, the hay.
Yeah, there's different kinds of, uh, shade structures and whatever, lean-to's, whatever they're called.
Just to show that what we're doing out there isn't uncommon, it might be not what people are used to seeing in terms of the enclosure, but what we're doing is common in the area.
Okay, you, you've explained it, I, I was curious as to what these photos were depicting. Thank you very much. Any other questions? That is all I will allow at this time, I think, have you been up, you've been up before? You've not, oh, please come up. Please state your name and address.
One two two four Gray Drive Exeter. Um, I've lived there for thirty years, it's been a.
Could you speak a little?
I have lived there for thirty years.
Ma'am, just move it up a little bit, there you go, thank you.
Okay, I've lived there for thirty years. I want to address three things. Number one is, uh, the Davises keep saying that their address is where they live, they do not live out there. They bought that property solely for a cat shelter, not as a family residence. No opposition was voiced earlier due to the fact that it was believed that they would be living there and the project confined to the barn area. As the project exploded, it became a concern, and now it looks like a prison yard. The intent of the community was ranch at family living, cross fencing for farm animals. And the variances requested are ten-foot cages covering over an acre and are not cohesive with the intent and the feel of family living. This was to be community living for family, kids for four age. And there is no way you can compare cross fencing for horses, cattle, sheep, to a prison yard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Yes, please. Please state your name and address.
My name is Laura Howell, and I live at two four two oh five Lomitos Drive. I'm here basically to share on the, on the cat side of it. I am a registered veterinary technician since nineteen ninety, I've worked in Tulare County. I'm retired from that aspect. I'm a counselor in Kings County, but I still live in Slary County. I have a lot of cats and dogs. When I worked as a vet tech, I could say no. When I retired, I can't say no. I understand the motivation and the direction. I would almost say I wish I could have a situation like that where I could have a lot of dogs that are safe and a lot of cats that are safe. All I have is three kennels that I bought from Tractor Supply. Total of six to make three so that I could make it bobcat-proof, mountain lion-proof, coyote-proof, bear-proof a couple of years ago. We live by the C-Mix gravel pit, and there are a lot of wildlife. And they always live above my kennels. The Ospreys and the Redhawks have picked off a number of animals that get dropped off out in that community. That's just kind of the aspect of where I come from. We have ten dogs. Recently, um, I work with Shepherds Without Borders to help find places in even Oregon and Idaho to transport, um, dogs that are found, for example, out there, dropped off in that area. We keep them safe as we can, kind of like what I think what she's trying to do is keep them safe. The bedroom that I have fourteen cats, thirteen in the bedroom, ooh, this sounds bad, doesn't it? Because I am a registered veterinary technician, I understand the concept and have been trained professionally, licensed by the state of California, to care for animals the way they're supposed to be cared for. I do have a care credit card and have a lot of animals spayed and neutered. I have an appointment on Friday for yet another cat that is, was dumped, and we're trying to keep her from breeding. But they do keep down the wildlife, like, uh, the rats and the mice and the, all the other critters, as lo, as well as the owls, we're trying to keep them safe. They're in my bedroom, I have a four-bedroom house, I have the room for it. You come to my house, he's concerned about someone who's allergic. We tell people when they come to our house, you got to come see the cat room, because when you hear it, you think, holy crap, it's got to be disgusting, you got to smell it when you open the front door. We take care of it. If you're allergic, you can walk outside the window and look inside. We've had a couple of people, and I have a nephew that's highly allergic to cats. I'm just saying that walking past the neighborhood's not a risk as far as that much, unless, you know, you walk by my house. The ten-foot is why I'd really like to talk about. In my bedroom, it's, it's a master bedroom and a master walk-in closet with eight cat boxes. We vacuum, we clean, we take care of those cats, they're all spayed and neutered, they're all vaccinated, they're all taken care of. They're in that bedroom because it's not safe outside that bedroom. It is not safe outside that bedroom, even in my front yard. We take our dogs out, they're in kennels outside, and then they're in kennels in the pantry, because we have the owls and the Ospreys and the Redhawks that will swoop down and they'll sit on a pole and watch. I'm just saying that, that the reason for the ten-foot is you need the area for them to be safe and their cats. And also get in there and take care of them, clean up, that's.
Okay, thank you, that, we, we're, your passion is well taken, and we understand how you're trying to relate that.
I am.
To this installation.
I found out about it because, um, my roommate's uncle lives in Merton, in that Merton area. And, uh, he had a fit when he found out about, not my neighborhood because of all the cats, just because he doesn't like cats. Then it was like, how does it affect you? Because he has to drive past that house that has the goats and the cow, the cows and the pigs, and the fence being torn down, that's across his yard. But he was worried about cats that aren't even in his area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments at this time, uh, I will close the public testimony and ask for a, uh, commentary from my fellow commissioners and/or a motion. Any comments?
It looks like we didn't, no matter what we make our decision, it's probably going to get appealed to the supervisors. So I think we've heard for at least three different meetings, pros and cons, and I think it's time to go for a vote.
To the chair, I'd like, uh, I'd like to make one clarification as far as my, my conversations I, I have had or have not had. Basically, just as a, a matter of clarification, when it was stated that, uh, I had said that this was, uh, staff's recommendation for approval because it was a matter of law, that, that is correct. I mean, looking at the, the facts of the case as applied to our zoning code, I had stated that our recommendations based on what the zoning code states, uh, for site plan review. And that was to look at the zoning. As stated many, many times, that we look at setbacks, and the conditions we are adding for a large degree are voluntary as made by the applicants, um, and as negotiation measures. So, in that regard, staff's recommendations based on the law and based on making this project as salient as possible. As far as, uh, I, I never stated there was, uh, a better location for that, but that was brought up in conversation. Uh, I don't think I had a answer for that statement, but that was stated. And, um, as stated many times before, the PDFM zone, the F-zone allows for farming, and it's specifically spelled out in there. So, in regards to, uh, is this farming, is this use of domesticated animals? Our zoning code is silent to cats, and so is the animal ordinance. So we treated it like a kennel. And as far as conditions of approval, we have more, uh, or planned, um, inspections coordinated with the animal, uh, services than we've ever done before. And, uh, just talking to Patrick this last week, we, we have agreed that we would do more inspections and make sure this is in compliance for something that, you know, we brought before you. Depends how you treat the, the silence in the zoning code and how we interpret it, we brought it before you to treat it as similar as we could to, to a kennel. Uh, again, this is not a use permit, so we are not analyzing whether this is a kennel for use permit purposes. This is an accessory structure under our site plan review, under our zoning.
Also, uh, correct, if I'm wrong, but, uh, what the CCNRs say, that's really not under our responsibility to make those decisions, that's the homeowners, and so we are just to deal with the laws and the rules set up by the county.
And you.
Zoning, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you for that, Erin. Uh, again, do I have a motion?
I have a longest-shitted comment, so I don't know if you want me to say that now or as I vote.
Say them now.
Okay. So, just, um, there's a couple of things that I've been looking at, and I missed the last hearing, so I had exigent circumstances, I was not here. I was at the first one, and obviously, I'm here today, at least I think I am. But, uh, to give you some background for my comments, to make sure that this makes sense, I, um, have renters in the family, so I am aware of what cow pie smell like. I have, um, we have raised various different types of animals. I'm also, uh, an arbitrator, so I'm not a judge, not an attorney, but I have looked from different angles, and I'm required to consider, as I hope I'm doing here, evidence from both sides. Some of the things that I'm looking at as I make my decision is, um, the question of equity. And I'm not talking equity in a home, because that's a sales value, that's something different. I'm not a real estate person, some of my colleagues are. But I'm talking equity for the situation, another way to term it would be justice. I did hear, and I want to make known that I did hear, you know, several of the neighbors say at the first hearing that they're allergic to animals. And I did hear now, um, I believe it was Mr. Steiner said that there was a lady who has to take, use an EpiPen. But I distinctly remember from the last hearing that I was at, so the first one in this series, that one of the neighbors told me that they live, I believe it's up, um, Gordon Drive or, or somewhere a little bit further from the property, so not even, um, subject, one of the, one of the properties that would need to be advised at the hearing. So a little bit further away, and she, I remember her saying that, um, neighbors around her have cats. So in my mind, I'm thinking, how do you know that the cats that are hundreds of yards away are what might be making you allergic versus the ones that are right next to you running around free, which she freely admitted to? So that's where this question of equity partly comes in. I'm also looking at some of these pictures here, in particular, I don't know what number this one is, uh, the last one in the packet, where there are some cows and a horse, and I'm looking at, by that pole that's in the middle, from left to right, a bunch of cow pies. And I'm wondering how those are not required to be picked up if they smell and are abundant. And I'm understanding that the applicant is required. And I'm understanding that the applicant is required, as they should be, to pick up the cat feces. Okay? So there's a question of equity there. Why leave the cow pies around? Some other things that I'm looking at in several of these pictures, and I'm not sure who, which property belongs to who, so if anybody's present, I apologize for offending you. But I'm looking at the difference between the way that I understand the, if you want to call it that, cat sanctuary property is kept, which looks to me to be very neat, and some of these other properties where it's overgrown and a potential fire hazard. And some of the accessory structures on those properties are something that I would not have in my backyard because they're about, look like they're about to fall down and there's tubs all over the place. Some other things that I'm looking at is I've heard both sides of the story where, you know, are property values going down or property values going up? I remember, okay, today I heard property values could go down, but at the first hearing, I heard somebody said their property was actually assessed higher. So actual assessment. So one is conjecture and one is fact, at least as presented here. Obviously, I didn't ask for evidence of an assessment. So in considering all of that, I'm thinking, okay, a cow says moo, a rabbit says whatever the rabbit says, a rooster crows, and they all defecate. So they all potentially have smelly, the German word would be, something else, I think in German sometimes. And I think, in my opinion, the applicants, if they wanted to have or rescue 400 roosters, there's nothing that this neighborhood could do about it if it fits within the limit of what the county code allows. I don't think cats are that loud. So just to make this a little bit shorter, I think that the equitable thing to do, given, in my opinion, what I've heard, is to support the county recommendation as stated.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion. So yeah, I will read it out.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Go call.
Ms. Galroy?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
I'm going to say yes. I did miss last meeting, but I did go through the minutes and there wasn't much change between this testimonies that I heard today and what I read there. So I feel I've got enough information to vote yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pearson?
Aguilera?
No.
The motion is passed. Thank you very much.
So you have X amount of days to appeal it. What's, how's that go?
It's ten days.
You can go right out here.
Thank you very much, everyone. Good analysis. Excellent analysis. Moving on to item six, Director's Report.
Through the chair. Last night, we had a workshop in the community of Cutler and Rosy and at Sierra, no, it's Golden Valley. Yeah, Golden Valley Elementary. And yeah, we've done five meetings in the last two weeks in between Ivanhoe and Cutler-Rosy, so we've been pretty busy on the road. Very successful meeting. It's one of the, we have a lot of the school's support, so it's, we were actually able to roll out road sections and go through Highway 63 and all the concerns the citizens have. It was probably one of our most successful workshops to date, so I'd like to applaud staff for putting that together and working with Yolanda, Superintendent for Cutler-Rosy School District, in putting that together. So we see a great path moving forward as Cutler-Rosy is our largest community in the county by far. And we look, we're kind of looking at probably nine months to a year to wrap that thing up, but given that it's one of our last communities on the valley floor, we're definitely willing to put in that kind of effort. We're also looking at Ivanhoe and Plainview and Woodville and moving forward very quickly on the environmental to try to get those projects completed within the calendar year. So we haven't had any hurdles as to progressing those yet, so I think we'll be highly successful there. Outside of that, we are currently working on the Community Facilities District, the first of its kind for the county with the Hash Project, and we look to get that to the board at the end of the month as far as the goals and policies. And also the Sequoia Gateway Development Agreement. We're working with County Council and it's quite the document right now, and I think it's going to be a very useful template moving forward as to how to finance these large-scale projects when the county doesn't necessarily have the financial mechanisms with the homeowners' associations or commercial associations or maintenance districts to really support large-scale projects. So we're getting those things in place. And again, this commission did approve both the development agreement as to its form and the C F D as to its form at the time as the mechanisms to provide the funding for these. So with those recommendations, we're going to move forward to the Board of Supervisors. So that's really all I have. I know Public Works is working on some projects.
Can I ask a question, Aaron? The hotel project that was hot and cold in Three Rivers, is that on the front burner, back burner? Where are we at with that?
Just, I'd like to think we're on the front burner with that project. It's really up to the applicant. So they seem like they're moving forward.
And we're considering another parcel than the original?
Yes, that is correct. So much more workable parcel. And we've gotten some tidbits from the community, but not a whole lot of discussion about it so far. But as far as the project's location that fits the zoning, so it should just be able to move forward. Any other questions?
Questions for Aaron?
I've got a question back, and again, I apologize, I missed the hemp thing there, but I've got a question.
It was all for you, Mr. Diaz.
Really, it was my idea.
It was a good discussion, Tim.
Just a question, though. We're going to have a moratorium on this, it looks like, for up to two years, and that's for growing the hemp. What about processing, crushing, oil, seed oil?
That was on the agenda two weeks ago, and there was a 22-month moratorium. I think it includes all of it from distribution on down to growing.
Growing, distribution, crushing, processing.
I don't think there's any doubt that this county, in between cannabis and hemp, has put a moratorium or a ban on the growing, but also the, all the way through the distribution. So any manufacturing aspects of it are also wrapped into the moratorium or the ban.
And the reason I ask that, of course, is I'm approached by people for crushed plants and stuff like that, and I'll have to locate him in Kings County, I guess, because I can't put him here, obviously, for two years.
And staff receives the same phone calls.
My newest client, who's a corrugated box manufacturer, a question about hemp because they want to have a source of paper from hemp. So that's a whole nother industry. I just want you to keep that in your mind, that we always talk about, I think there's more money in the oil and those products, but the people who make boxes and paper, there appears to be a need.
It's also an alternative for cotton, too, so it has a lot of uses.
So yes, as suggested, stay in tune with APEC as they move forward and the Ag Commissioner. I know the Ag Commissioner is getting a lot more phone calls than we are collectively, so there's definitely interest, maybe not as much interest as there was some years back, but there's definitely interest.
I think the suggestion last time was that he join that committee or whatever it was he referred to.
Statewide Commission.
statewide commission. We're not even on it. Was he, do you know if he's going to do that?
He's on the phone conversation this last week, so that might have been that committee.
Going to do that?
I don't know if he's going to join, but I know.
That'd be a good idea. Any other questions of Aaron? Johnny?
Just a quick comment. Hi, everyone. So as I mentioned last time, because a number of you were, weren't here, we do have a slew of projects to be in construction. The summer is around the corner, so we have a number of contracts that we'll be awarding in the weeks to come. Also, we have a number of projects that we'll be bidding out as well. So this year, the summer marks our second year of utilizing S B one funds to rehab over 30 miles of roadway on top of all the other community projects that we're working on. So it will be a busy summer, and so as these projects come up, then I'll, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but as these projects, as we get closer to awarding or getting to the ground, I'll talk more about them in detail if interested.
Hector, our environmental guru. I know you called me the last time not to call you Chief Environmental Officer.
Well, thank you.
T E O.
I am not the environmental officer. Everybody says that. I'm not the environmental officer. That's cute. Hector, you're a chief environmental planner. Yeah, as Director Bach mentioned, I have three mitigated negative declarations for three community plans that we're trying to get out next Friday. Ivanhoe, Woodville, and Plainview. So we're busy there. And I'm getting out this Friday, mitigated neg deck for 150-acre solar project. We're working on an E I R for the Woodville landfill expansion and for Dunn Asphalt, which is near Sequoia Gateway, Avenue 280.
As a point of clarification, it's not near, it's across the freeway, so about a mile.
West of 99, half a mile. But no, we're busy, the Environmental Planning Division, and then we do environmental documents for like the Ag Department or for County Council, and they have stuff they want us to change and for Public Works. So you don't see a lot of stuff. It doesn't come to the commission regularly, but what it does come, it seems to come in droves. So you'll be getting quite a few towards the end of the fiscal year and Cutler-Rosy is going to be an environmental impact report. That is a large community. If they were to incorporate into a city, it'd be like number five in the city. There's like 28,000 people out there, so it isn't tiny. And Aaron and others and his staff that are going to these community meetings, I believe sixth or fifth, they're probably getting really good participation and really good community feedback. I know that community well, and they do participate. They show up a lot. So I think that's exciting for him to do that. So yeah, environmental planning, we're keeping busy.
And through the chair, as a point of clarification in regards to industrial hemp, I believe County Council would like to correct me on certain aspects of that. So.
Yes, the moratorium refers to growing and manufacturing industrial hemp only.
What does that mean exactly, County Council?
The moratorium does not refer to processing.
Okay.
But does manufacturing refer to, then?
Hello there, County Commission. I'm Aaron Zahin, Deputy County Counsel. As a point of clarification for the industrial hemp moratorium, I was actually one of the ones that had a hand in drafting the moratorium. Maybe I can clarify, the moratorium at the direction of the agricultural commissioner only points to the cultivation of industrial hemp within the county of Tulare. There is no mention of processing or manufacture of industrial hemp, only the cultivation thereof.
So you're saying that it's possible, then, we could locate crushed plants here to crush the seed? We transport the seed?
We would have to take a look at our zoning code. It's more than just the moratorium at that point.
So the moratorium is specific towards the county as to what we specifically prohibit. State law and federal law may be more inclusive.
Help me. I could bring canola seed in here and crush canola, and I'm okay, right?
If you, we can provide that information to you at a later date. This is getting the area of attorney-client privileged information, and we don't share that in open public settings.
Okay, well.
It requires further study.
All right, any other comments from staff?
No, that's good for today.
I will not be at the next meeting of Velma. I will be out of town.
I was going to bring cookies.
Item seven, under Play Commission discussion items. I didn't allow Steve at the beginning of our session to introduce himself, so I'd like to do that right now. We don't have a large audience, but Mr. Steve Pearson from District Five. Steve and I know each other.
Yeah.
From the old days at Campbell Creek in River Island.
Because you guys are old.
We're old.
Yes, we are.
Those old days.
We're old and wise. So Steve, give us a little background on yourself.
Yeah, I've grown up in the construction industry. My father was a general. He moved to Porterville in the early 60s and developed some properties. I went away to school, got out of school, took a job, didn't want any part of it. He got older and he says, you better get back here and take care of this stuff. So I moved back in 96, I believe, and I had been in development business in Marin County. I was up there for eight, 10 years. So I came back and Dad says, here, this is it. You better do something with it or I'm going to, get rid of it. So I said, okay. So I did some working in town. I bought some buildings from the hospital, moved those down, moved the property that we had, revitalized those, did a bunch of fix-it stuff in the community. Then I bought a piece of dirt behind Bartlett, which had a school building on it. That has been recently torn down, and I'm going through the process of building 24 more units. I bought the old Daybell Nursery, if anybody remembers the Daybell Nursery property in Porterville.
Or this.
I think more of the dollar or something like that.
Steve's got a cliff house off of the hillside up there, right?
Did you happen to see the photographs two years ago in July where the fire went up the side of the hill, burned around the house? It was in the paper, made above the cut, above the fold or whatever it was.
Oldridge Drive, right?
Fourth or seventh or whatever it was, yeah. That was my house. My house has got concrete all the way around it, sits up on the side of a hill, and my dad and I, we get the house, this hill's going to burn one day. It's got concrete all around, it's got a metal roof, and it's got stucco on the outside of it, and that's it.
Good advertisement.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Welcome aboard.
I had harassed Mr. Ennis for a few years, it never seemed to get anywhere because I knew there was an absentee.
Kept asking him and asking him.
Ennis came along, then it was a little easier.
Any comments on the state?
Yeah, we, on our California County Planning Commissioners Conference, of course, for April 25th, some of the rooms are now starting to be reserved in the block at the headquarters, which is the Diamond Hotel in Chico. So Steve Velma, she can make reservations for you or we'll have actual, the conference brochure will be coming out in the next 30 days or so. There'll be a.
Date again?
There'll be, pardon me? April 20, oh, April. October 25th.
I thought you said April, too. I said, hey, I think we missed. October 25th?
October 25th is the all-session day, so you need to get up there the 24th and night of the 24th. The, it's interesting because I had a LA Times reporter, was a guest of mine this week at my place in Three Rivers, and she's a metro reporter for LA Times, and her biggest assignment for the next year is the Camp Fire in Paradise. So she's going to probably attend the conference, too, and we're going to have some kind of tie-in with this fire safety thing that's just been issued by Cal Fire. And we're gonna, the real theme of the conference is how do we plan for fire-safe communities? And that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do. From a planning standpoint, the state has issued a lot of areas, I think there's a dozen of them, which are high-risk areas in the state. So we're looking at those, and I know we'll be having a lot of testimony of campfire victims and people that'll be there that are still to this day without a clue what's going to happen in the future in that area in Paradise.
I just read an article, 10 to 15,000 of the Paradise people moved. I just read an article, 10,000 to 15,000 of the Paradise people moved into Chico.
Right.
And now Chico is on the verge of going.
Well, they're going through.
Financially upside down because they have to take care of all these people.
Well, they have some problems, but Chico has a bright future, too. It also has a really vibrant business community, it's got a state university, and we're going to look at a lot of things in our conference that are really going to be timely and of great interest. And we're also going to visit the State Water Project in Oroville and see how they're doing with the spillway repair that they did a couple of years ago, and I think it's going to be one of our best ever, and we, you know, we're going to do, one of our tours is going to be of Sierra Nevada Brewery, and the reason we're doing that is because the owner of Sierra Nevada has given millions to the campfire victims, and he's not available to keynote our banquet, but he's sending his daughter, and her name is Sierra, interestingly, and she's probably going to be our keynote speaker for the dinner. So it's going to be a really interesting perspective, not just for the people that are victims and what we do about that in the future, but also the businesses that have stepped forward and are really helping with the effort to, for relief. So I've been involved in a lot of these conferences and planning more than a dozen of them, and this one is going to be over the top, I can assure you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? If not, we will adjourn. Next meeting, May 22nd, 2019.